City Council, March, no, February, I have no idea, April 4th, 2023. I'm tired. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is that?
A rave.
Somebody started there early. It's not like my drawing.
My washing machine, that's not good.
Loads unbalanced.
Local, yes, please. McKeever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Potter? Harrison?
Here.
Spiegel?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Before you, you have the March 21st, 2023 Regular Council Minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak.
McKeever, please?
Yes.
Didn't we vote to switch those places? When did they get switched back?
Switch what places?
The granting permission for visitors and accepting the minutes.
I think we had talked about it, but I don't think it ever got decided.
I thought we got it for this, but not for the other. Yeah, we did. Because it saved us time when we had a bunch of issues.
Okay, well, moving forward, we'll be...
Sorry.
Nope, that's all right. We'll have to put approval of the minutes after permission from now on.
After this?
Yep.
And we have it for council, but not for the committees.
Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr. Zach.
No, it's been helpful because we're trying to get the IT working, but as John's working on that, I'll start. Are we close? Give us a second. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Helps if you put the fob in the computer.
Okay, well, I will start talking. That's usually not a problem for me. It is great to be here. I am David Zach. I have the privilege of running the Crawford Partnership and acting as the city's Economic Community and Workforce Development Agent. I'm here tonight on a community development mission, which is kind of fun. We were recently awarded the contract to run the county's Community Development Block Grant Program. So this is a program that's been around a long time, since 1974. So the real intent of those programs that they consolidated in the Community Development Block Grant was really impact positively the lives of low to moderate income individuals and create job opportunities and provide decent housing. So the Community Development Block Grant Program was created. Another really cool thing that happened, thank you, John, another really cool thing that happened, they had eight separate programs that were really top-down. So that's where the feds were saying, this is what we think you ought to do and how you get to spend the money. When they created the Community Development Block Grant Program, they said, what we're going to do is we're going to have some certain national objectives you may have to meet, and there are certain requirements, but we're going to give a lot more flexibility and control locally to be able to use those funds and how you use those funds. And so if you're big enough as a city or our place, you are entitled to get money directly from the feds. But no community in Bucyrus is big enough, and the county isn't big enough from a population standpoint, to be entitled to get money directly from the federal government. So what we have to do is apply to the state to get those funds. So what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to give you an overview of that program, which I just started. So I'm now into the talk about the national objectives of the Community Development Block Grant Program, because that's the program I'm here to talk about tonight. I will tell you, I had originally thought that was going to be an update on the partnership, but there's no way I want to pack that much stuff in. So in the next couple of weeks, we'll plan that separately. I know a lot of you had committees, the committees met during our annual meeting. I wanted to make sure to give you all updates. So that's coming sometime either the next meeting or the meeting after the next meeting. So we'll talk about the national objectives of the Community Development Block Grant Program, what are examples of the kinds of eligible activities, available funding. There are really five pots of funding that we're going to talk about tonight. And then past activities in the last six, three cycles, how has Bucyrus been able to participate in this program, give you a couple of concrete examples, talk about the overall program requirements in terms of what has to happen, and then talk about the process, and then I'll kind of be over. What I have for you in this packet is a copy of the slides, and then I have a summary of everything I'm going to say, and then I have it written out in detail if you really like the nitty-gritty. So I believe this is helpful. It's a reference guide. You can kind of dig in after the fact, and we have all of this information, and this stuff's going to be posted this week, but we have a ton of information at buildcrawford.org. It's a forwarding address that goes to a page on our site that's devoted to Community Development Block Grant. So it's got all the information. You can go there and you can get, so every citizen can go and get that information. It's not limited to the elected officials. Okay, so that being said, let me kind of dig back in. Again, I've talked about funding to states, cities, and counties. When it started in 1974, there were about 300 grantees. There are now 600 grantees. When you adjust for inflation, when it started, it had about $11 billion going out, and now it's between three and four. So over time, it has kind of decreased, adjusted for inflation. But that being said, they've, the federal government has provided more than $150 billion to local communities. Similar to jobs, you know, I'm sure this is going to come as a shock, but there simply isn't enough money to do all the things that you want to do for the citizens of your community, right? All the housing things, all the streets that need repaired, all the water and sewer issues, just not enough money. And so this is something that's designed to help. It's not a silver bullet, but it's designed to help. So that's kind of an overview of the program. Talk about the national objectives. So I said the money was more flexible, but what, you have to meet one of three national objectives. The one all the way on the right is urgent need. That's if you have a disaster. There is nothing right now in the city of Bucyrus or Crawford County that would constitute that unless you had a major fire at a building, for example, and it were about to come down, or we had a major flood, or we had, you know, some kind of natural disaster. So right now, there really aren't projects that meet that urgent need, which is really disaster. The two that get to be relevant, one is, you know, providing assistance to individuals low to moderate income, and two, address issues of slum and blight. Slum and blight either traditionally takes the form of rehabilitating a building or demolishing a building. So it's really benefits the citizens of Bucyrus, including, and just making the community a better place. Sometimes you'll see, again, low, you know, dilapidated housing, it's a way to get rid of it, or old building that doesn't have particular historic value. On low to moderate income side, there are a number of things that you're trying to do. One is area to benefit. So the entire city of Bucyrus is more than 51% low to moderate income, according to the most recent data. So doing a project in the city of Bucyrus, and the state and the feds allow us to go for the easiest category. So basically, if we do a project in the city of Bucyrus, it qualifies for low to moderate income. Because if you're doing it in the city, it's going to, more than 51% of the city's residents are, 80% or more of the areas meet income, so we get it by area benefit. In addition, limited clientele, there are certain groups that the federal government presupposes are going to meet low to moderate income requirements. These are folks like those with severe disabilities, homeless, migrant workers, seniors. So there are certain groups, like you can do projects for senior centers, and it qualifies because it's addressing the needs of seniors, so in and of itself, it qualifies. And then housing and jobs, those are programs that at the state level aren't what I'm talking about tonight. So there are separate economic development programs that we do have access to help companies with, for example, infrastructure and those kinds of things, and there are things related to housing. The state gives some of their Community Development Block Grant to an organization called OFA to help for low-income housing tax credits, and they have other programs as well, like CHIP. We're not talking about that tonight. So we are really focusing on the other programs. So in other words, whatever we do flexibly at the local level or at the state level, it needs to meet at least one national objective. Okay, so eligible activities, so some examples. So water projects, so there's water plant projects, water line projects, anything that addresses water projects, or water sewer, storm sewer, roads, sidewalks, and the two projects that I'm, or two of the projects I'm highlighting were sidewalk projects that were done. ADA accessibility, slum and blight, it talked about demo and rehab, public facilities, so parks, recs, senior centers, community centers, domestic violence shelters, homeless shelters, food pantries, fire protection equipment, and many other things of that nature kind of meet these requirements. And then I kind of had with the asterisk, housing development and economic development, again, not covered by the sources of money I'm talking about tonight. So let's talk about it. So the five buckets of money. So the first one is they take the population and they can kind of divide it out. There are cities in the state like Cleveland and others that are, get that money directly from the feds, but everybody else, the state gets a bunch of money, and then by population who's left, they set aside a certain amount of money. They allocate a certain amount of money that that community can apply for. So in the case of this, the community, Crawford County, can't apply for $220,000 minus 20 for administration. That's us, that's the county, that's another consultant that we have to do a lot of paperwork. This is, there is a ton of paperwork. For, as example, one of the requirements is Davis Bacon prevailing wages paid on any construction. You have to go out there and do labor surveys. This is just one example, the paperwork to make sure that you're meeting federal requirements. So it's all good. We will make sure and take care of that. And then, so there are 176, there's 176,000 for projects. Again, we can do up to two projects, plus we can do some planning, comes every two years. That's one pot of the money. Another pot is something called critical infrastructure. So if you have critical infrastructure, that could be roads, that could be water, that could be sewer, that is, has been certified by an engineer as failing or have failed, has already failed, then you can go up to 500,000. Now, these next four are statewide competitive, but Crawford County has been successful, and we, and I've been successful previous organization, going after that money if you have an eligible project. So that's 500,000. Every year, there's a new tranche of money. So this allocation happens every two years, but this critical infrastructure, every year there's a new pot of money, and it becomes available July 1st, and usually don't spend all of that money, and so there's another round that they develop in December. So really, one of the big takeaways from this meeting is, this is also not just about the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's really about starting a process of really identifying and prioritizing projects that you want long-term so that we can go after multiple sources of money, not just these sources of money, but be proactive in trying to support what you all are doing. I mean, the city's done a good job in going after grants. We just want to add to that and help get more resources to help the citizens. So critical infrastructure. Residential Public Infrastructure Grant, affectionately known as ARPIG, is around and really just handles water and sewer, but there's a higher bar than with critical infrastructure. Whereas critical infrastructure has to really meet the engineers, it's failing or failed. With Residential Public Infrastructure Grant, you have to have a demonstrated, you know, EPA or NPD as health hazard that's been documented, plus anecdotes of, you know, things that are going on. So it's a harder standard to meet, but if, for example, lead in the water or some other kind of major crisis is going to affect people's health, you can go after three-quarters of a million dollars. Again, this is, this is every year that these funds are made available. One I find very exciting is neighborhood revitalization. So this is every two years. This is up to three-quarters of a million dollars. Fundamentally, it's a longer-term program in that what we're looking to do over the next several months is identify neighborhoods that could benefit from this, and then we start doing a lot of required, specific to this program, public engagement. So this is really where you have to really put in the work of nine to 12 months, and we would help facilitate that, and really identifying what the people want, and then working to try to address that. So it's, the federal government, the state government is very interested, and when it comes to neighborhood revitalization, as people in the neighborhood are saying, this is really what we want for our neighborhood to become better. So neighborhood revitalization, it's not something that's going to happen by June 1, but it's something we want to start thinking about so that we can, we can, we can work on beginning to prepare for that. Last but not least, they have what used to be called Targets of Opportunities, now called the Flexible Grant Program. It's basically if something meets CDBG requirements but doesn't fit in one of these categories, as a matter of fact, they ask you, why aren't you using your allocation or why aren't you applying as a one criteria to determine whether you get it? But Flexible Grant Program will go up to 250,000, pretty standard, but they have done grants up to half a million dollars. Examples of something in the Flexible Grant Program might be a larger demolition of a larger building, a school, or something, you know, older industrial facility that's going to cost a lot more than if it's just like a house. That would be one example of something that would meet the slum and blight, but also be significantly more expensive than you can get done with allocation. So it's kind of Flexible Grant Program. So one of the things that I've sent to the administration, but it's also available online, I'll send you all, is kind of a community needs assessment. So we have two forms online. One is just, here's the different blocks of things, what are some of the needs of the community that you've assessed, and just get it down and begin to collect those ideas of what you need. If you have a dollar price tag, that'd be great, but even if you don't, we'll send them to you. That's called the Conditioner Needs Questionnaire, giving that to the administration as well. Public's free to fill that out and just give us ideas as well, so we'll take them from anybody and everybody. So the second form is a project proposal form. So specifically for allocation of these, that's where, do you have a budget? Do you have a specific area identified? Is it kind of ready to go? Do you know, do you have any other sources of money kind of allocated? Don't necessarily have to, because there is no, technically, there is no match requirement anymore for Community Development Block Grant. There used to be on some of these programs, but they've done away with all that. So, but that's where, yeah, I have a project, I have a street or I have a sidewalk project or I have a, you know, a park project or a water plant project, and I know how much it's going to cost, I know what the pieces are and the parts, and I know if we've got any funding. That's then a project versus kind of the ideas that would go in the Conditioner Needs Assessment, and that's what we're looking for. And sometimes it's taking these ideas and then getting a budget around it, doing the, you know, getting that data that we also want to work on in the coming months and years to position those as we got projects ready to go off the shelf, we know what they're going to cost, and then we find pots of money, including, but not limited, the CDBG to fund it. Okay, in 2019, the city of Bucyrus took advantage of, you know, between $90,000 and $100,000 for a couple sidewalk costs, totally funded them, a couple sidewalk improvements on River Street and Whitestone, and then although there wasn't a Bucyrus-specific project, the Salvation Army Crawford Marion Adam H facility, it was, 2021 was going to go to Chatfield and do something in Galleon. Those both kind of fell through, and so right now, that's going to fund, a facility that's going to primarily service a clientele of low to moderate income individuals by its very nature, so that meets the national objective. So that's kind of what's going on. So Bucyrus has been able to take advantage of this in the past, and again, it's not going to, it's not going to solve a major issue, but, you know, I'm of the philosophy, every dollar we can help bring to the communities, the better. Okay, rounding, rounding third base and coming home, some of the program requirements. We target, we'd like to, the technical deadline for when all work has to be completed for the set-aside program is August 31st, 2025. But what we like to say is you're kind of planning for, yeah, all things being equal, we would get it done in 2024, because this may also not come as a shock, sometimes construction gets delayed, or sometimes things happen, but we wouldn't necessarily disqualify a project, but if you have projects that are kind of ready to go for next, you know, be completed next year, et cetera, then that would be kind of ideal. I talked about if there's construction, Davis Bacon prevailing wages apply, there's a ton of regular reporting and documentation that we have to do, including the sign-in sheets for community engagement, citizen participation. So one of the reasons, and I'm a big fan of this, that I think we want is because we're doing this tonight. So this is not a required legal public hearing. We have one, we've got notices in, and we did a whole lot more than that. That's going to happen at the county on April the 11th. I'm also doing, in addition to that, here, Crestline, New Washington, and Galleon, and we're doing a virtual online meeting at 7:00 PM next Thursday with a link available at buildcrawford.org. So anybody who can't be there at 1:30 for that can try to make, we're trying to make it available, we're going to record that. Citizens can watch this. We just want to get the information out and get people engaged. And again, this is kind of the starting point for really developing what I think is a comprehensive, really bottom-up kind of engaged process to get, at the end of the day, more projects in the city of Bucyrus done that are going to impact the people of Bucyrus. There is, there are requirements for our set-aside that at least half the money that we're going to use for a set-aside goes towards those with low to moderate income. You can get a waiver for that if you got a project, because the state's got overall requirements, and also for planning. You can do more than 20% for planning if you ask for a waiver. So that's where we are with, you know, some of the program requirements. Last slide, I believe, outside of my contact information. So learning about the program, I talked about, we got this meeting, we got some other council meetings next week, but the public hearing, 1:30, County Commissioner's Office on the 11th, and then that virtual meeting, we're going to have also next Thursday at 7:00 PM, link at buildcrawford.org. What we're hoping to do is get all kind of the community needs assessments back by the 17th, so there might be a little bit of time if we can get a quick quote and potentially submit it. So just kind of the ideas, are there any good ideas that we could do a little work on and see if they're, get a quote as a possible project? We're looking for officially all project proposals to be submitted. That's the 10-page questionnaire that we have in Word and also in online fillable format. It basically says, how much is it going to cost, where is it, you know, the basics of it. And then that, that's going to, we need those by the second. The commissioners are going to evaluate those, and then there is a public hearing that happens on the 10th of May, second legally required public hearing, in which the projects are announced, what projects they have selected to go. If, if, if there are any amendments, another public hearing is required if any changes are made after that second public hearing. There is a complaint process for any citizen to, you can send it to either, my information's going to be up here. Can you put it to the last one?
Yeah.
So on the site, the partnership, I have someone always watching that at partnership@crawfordpartnership.org. So kind of selects, I'm sorry, kind of selects the projects on 5/16. That's the public hearing, I'm going to go back. So around, so I'm going to, I misspoke. Proposals are going to be evaluated around the 10th, and on the 16th at 1:30 at the County Commissioner's Office is going to be that second public hearing. So this is my information. So if we get any complaints or any, we're going to respond within, you know, a couple of weeks to any technical questions or anything, anybody has any concerns. The process is designed to be transparent. We also have online our whole citizen participation and engagement plan, that's also online. Again, things we're not trying to do, we're just trying to be very transparent and very engaged. So with that, I'll take a breath and see if anyone has any questions at this time. Again, doing it early as we're launching, even before the call, giving you time to kind of process and begin to think about what kind of things you'd like to see in terms of community development projects for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of information.
Mr. Will in touch.
Yes.
Just in question, if I could like the signage?
Yes, absolutely.
Here.
You didn't have to get up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a Mr. Ken Long that wished to address.
Hello, my name's Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street, Bucyrus. The reason I'm here tonight, I want, I heard a conversation about the pool situation for the summer, and I'm probably like a lot of folks, I've got, I've got grandkids, want to use it, and so I'm here to, you know, find out what the situation is, what, what's being done, what can be done. So we're, we're in 60 days, so.
So are you looking for an answer?
Yes.
Could be an answer. During the, as finance chair, during the budget, when we were talking about the budget at that point, which was in probably November, early December, we decided that we didn't have the money to open the pool, and we had, kind of threw that back into the public. I think I made a plea here at one of the meetings that if anyone out there, you know, can help out, you know, start something or do something. And so now we're here, like you say, 60 days before, or whatever. It's probably more than that, it's May, April, May, a couple months before we would actually open it. That's where we're at. So nothing's been done. So we don't have the money, basically, to run the city and open the pool, basically because we haven't, you know, industries have left, you know, going back to Baja, Checkmate, Swan, I don't know, we could go on and on, GE recently, IB Tech. So every time one of those leaves, we get farther and farther behind. So our tax base is low, we've looked at different ideas, nothing's really came through, so I don't really have an answer for you, but other than in December, we decided this, and, you know, now it's, you know, when it gets closer, then, you know, a lot of people are saying, why aren't you opening it? Well, I think we kind of made that clear back then. I'm not sure if everybody heard it, you know, probably not, but that's the decision we made back then, just to keep police and fire and ambulance and whatever else. We got your garbage pickup, and, well, I mean, that's, comes out of a different budget, but anyway. So, I don't know, if you want to answer, that's my best answer.
I appreciate what you told me. Obviously, it's not what I'm interested in hearing.
Right, right.
But is it, is it fair to say that the budget's roughly about $100,000 a year for the pool?
For the pools, I believe so, yes.
I think it's 160.
It was about, it was about 70 in years past with the inflation of the cost of chemicals and in payrollizing. I think we estimated it at about 100 and 500, 6000.
Okay, so I guess, but let's just, for talking purposes, say it's $100,000. All right, so that took, that one line item took 100% hit. What, what else compares to that as far as things that took hit, took a hit? You know, for example, I'll just lay it out here. I understand economic times, plans closing, I think some, some plans are busier than ever, but it probably washes out, so, you know, keep, keep moving. But if, if that one line item took 100% hit, what else did, and what did the other, what other things took a hit, of what percentage, to maybe find some of that money?
We have no money budgeted for any maintenance for any of our buildings. We took completely out. How much was that approximately?
400, 400.
That was 400,000. That's, we had to make a cut, and we can't, if we have anything go wrong with this building or the garage back here or the other buildings we have to maintain, we have to figure out if we can pay for it or not. Right now, we took, that took the biggest hit.
I think we took out some vehicles for the police department as well.
Which we were going to purchase, but we can't.
Okay, and I guess one example I saw last summer was, and I'm going to, I'm going to assume it's probably different funding, but when Shawper Avenue was all repaid, it looks like, like an airplane, aircraft could land on there. I mean, that's a beautiful piece, piece of tar up there. I'm, I'm sure that costs money, and I'm sure it's a different funding, but, you know, just as a, as a citizen, I'm thinking, okay, so let's just say we spent 5 mil up there, take out 100,000, let's have the pool open. That, I know it's not that simplistic, okay, but, but, you know, but you've got 15,000 people here that, you know, feel differently than that, so what, what can we do? Where is money available? You know, what, what funding, I don't understand that, all the funding sources, okay, so I'll be a first submit, but, you know, there's, there's multiple pots of funds here, and it seems reasonable when something has to be done, it gets done, you know, and this, this affects so many people.
To answer your one question, because I think a lot of the people in the community do feel that way, the streets are funded with money that cannot be used for anything else.
Right, I assume that.
So that's probably the biggest one that we hear, is, is the money that we're paving and things with, and it just legally cannot be moved and used anywhere else.
I assume there's a, there's a.
Like Dan said, we've, we've, you know, looked at a lot of different options, and we beat our heads up against the wall, and, you know, that's, that's where we're at.
What, what money competes with the pool?
Everything in the general fund, which is everything that's not sewer and water and trash, and it's really your public safety is your, what, 80, 80-plus percent of that budget.
Okay, so everything from police, staff, that's all general fund type money, and, okay. What kind of a, what kind of a budget is that? I mean, what's a, how many dollars is that, is that fund roughly?
The whole general fund?
Yeah, yes, sir. Just, just roughly.
She's going to give you the exact number.
What I'm driving at is I want to see how, what, what percentage of that is this $100,000 we're talking about?
Probably about, what'd we say, 90, 80, what? For, for safety forces.
We're about 90%. We're about 6 million dollars.
About 90% of the general fund, which is 1 and 1/2, wait, 1 and 1/2%, basically, because half percent is the safety forces levy, so 1 and 1/2% of your income tax dollars that you're giving us, giving the city, goes towards safety forces. So is that, would that be a correct statement? trying, I guess we're trying to find a hundred grand someplace to do this. And I know it's easier said than done.
Certainly, yes.
We tried, we tried.
No, I know, I assume that your your hearts are all in the right place, but just for some reason, we're just not getting to the promised land. So that's that's why I'm here to try to, you know, what what can be done to jumpstart this thing?
So, you know, you see, we're we're short in the in the general fund. Now, when it comes to the water, okay, your water bill, if we need more water, if we if we fall short in that, then we just raise the rates, okay?
Right.
If we fall short in, well, we get we have a percentage of the street, street fund, which is half percent of your income tax, we just use that, we do as many streets as we can every year. And then what's the other one? Sewer, sewer, if you're sewer, you know, if we fall short in the sewer.
Raise the rates.
We raise the rates. But we cannot raise the rates. Your income tax, we have to raise the income tax rates. That's why we are asking for a quarter percent income tax increase, okay? That's the only way we can get this money to to support the pools, the safety forces.
That supports the safety forces, which opens up.
Strictly to support safety forces, yeah.
Well, this is strictly. Safety forces levy is valid, it's not going to help this year, but if we can get it to pass, it will get us through this year and make sure that we're good on next year.
So the safety forces, when we voted for the safety forces, that has nothing to do with with the pool though, right?
No.
Is that is that the same is that the same fund or is it's not?
No. You're talking about the one we passed previously.
No, the one is.
The one that's on now?
That's.
Yeah, so that's going to that's going to help offset some of the money that the general fund has to do to cover our safety forces.
Oh, I see.
We're asking for an additional quarter percent. That's going to give us more money coming in so that some of that other money in the general fund that is currently being used for safety forces can be used for the things like you're bringing up.
Okay, and and I understand that the the safety forces are a big, much greater concern. Okay, I get that. Labor, you know, overtime, Kelly days, all the above and what how how can that be bear negotiated? If because what from my perspective, if we have less industry, those those folks are still getting raises. And I'm not saying they're not worth more money, but everything else has to give too, you know, and so it what how is that how is that balanced out?
I would just say we go into negotiations every contract period and this year with the fire department, we went into fact finding and had a fact finder issue a decision, which then council had to accept or reject based upon what the fact finder found. And if we rejected that, then we go back and go to binding arbitration. So there's no guarantee that the fact finder and the binding arbitrator don't agree that that's legitimate. And with the police department in this time, we just came to an agreement. But every every union period, we go to negotiation with the various three unions that the city has and the fire department one was way further with fact finding and we were we were presented with what the fact finder thought was a fair and equitable solution to that kind and we approved that.
Okay, and right now, we are some of the least paid in the state. If we want to keep these guys, we have to be able to pay them.
No, I I see you.
Because if we don't.
I feel for your position.
If we don't have these people, we don't have a police force. If we don't have these people, we don't have an ambulance service. If we don't have these people, we don't have firefighters. And I mean, I just saw an accident on the road today that had everybody involved. Some of the police were out there, the sheriffs were out there, the ambulance was out there. These this is a very important part of our our community. This is what keeps our people safe. You don't want to cut to get to the pool and then suddenly have somebody drowning at the pool and not be able to have an ambulance out there because you don't have anybody.
No, that's not my intent. And I know you guys probably catch catch a lot of crap from everybody about, you know, wages and and contracts and all that stuff and I'm not one of them. I I get both sides. I see both sides and everybody's just got to try to find something in the middle. That's that's what I'm trying to do with the pool. I'm trying to like, where where is this money? Where where could the money come from or can it move from a different funding source into there legally? Is there is that already has that been?
We try.
I think we beat that horse, there's just nothing left we can do.
We've even been begging for donations. I mean, we're not, nobody's.
Yeah, Mr. Wireball even mentioned clear back in December and in January, we are willing to take donations and even ask for sure if we got at least 70,000 that we possibly could open.
Okay.
But we'd have to have the money come in and it'd have to come in for that.
Could that be a like a more a limited a limited time period or three days a week or five days a week or something like that or or unknown?
The pool itself still is going to cost the same to run, whether how many days you have open, the only savings would be on your staff and that's that's really not the major part of your expense. It's the chemicals and the maintenance on the pool. That can't be squandered.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I mean, obviously, you know, I know you guys doing you're doing your best to try to figure this thing out, but I just wanted to see if I could get somebody to push over the edge.
It's kind of like, okay, you're working, you know, you're working nine to five and you know, at the quick check or whatever it is and you make so much an hour and then they say, listen, you're going to go down to four days a week. That's what happens when GE leaves or Swan leaves or or Timken shuts down their distribution facility and we just keep taking the day off. At some point, you know, then you stop eating out, you know, and then you stop and you say, well, maybe we only need one car instead of two cars.
Right.
And that's kind of what we're doing. So our our biggest issue is revenue. We are not generating enough, we're not generating the revenue. I don't think are are we generating the revenue we did in the past or not?
No, I'm sure auditor tonight will tell you what happened in March. It wasn't pretty.
So, yeah, so we're just not bringing in the money. It's just like, you know, I like to I like to, you know, portray it as as, you know, you at home because people understand their budget at home, you know, when when the when the guy, you know, when the boss cuts out the overtime, you know, it's like, geez, you know, I was kind of dependent on that overtime. Well, we're kind of in the same boat right now. So if you got any friends, you know, you know, if you know, you know, some big corporate guru or something, then, you know, ask them to to build a plant here and then, you know, maybe we can maybe we can open the pool.
So you mentioned about having donations, which, you know, I understand that. So has is there anybody from the city that's actually actively pursued that with let's just say there's 15 major corporations here in in the area? Is anybody talking to them to see if they could loosen up some cash?
I made a I I contacted the YMCA and still haven't heard back. And I think someone else on council had. The mayor said he had contacted the YMCA also think asking them if they could, you know, operate it, if we could, you know, kind of, we did that years ago when we had a budget crunch, but I never I never heard back, so.
All right, well, I appreciate your your time. Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect. In the past, the pool was facing a closure during, I think, the last time that the police and fire were laid off. And if I remember correctly, Roger Moore was able to secure some donations from some businesses in town and that pool was able to open that year. Now, I know the costs are way higher now than they were back then, but I think if somebody in administration, you know, would just go down the list and start calling these businesses and saying, hey, could you give us a couple of thousand? I personally, my business, I would donate to that. I I think the businesses are out there that would do it. It's going to take somebody calling them, but I don't even know if there's time this year to do it. Sounds like it's almost getting too late. But if some miracle can happen and somebody can start getting on the phone tomorrow, please call my business. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have a comment. A lot of what Kurt said, maybe a sponsorship, you know, if you had, you know, goals over broad sponsors and, you know, somebody throws in five grand, three grand, one grand, 500 bucks, you know, whatever. I mean, that's that's how a lot of plaques get put up and things like that, donations. So it is just an idea.
Anybody else? All right, communications and petitions, you have in your packet, an email from a young lady about the pool and you had a phone call, you said, from Sandy.
From Sandy Fankhauser.
Yeah.
She has a traffic commission issue, stripes that were painted on the road at Mary Street and East Mansfield Street.
Are going the wrong way or she said there's something wrong with the stripes?
Yeah.
Okay, if I could, I facilitated a conversation with her and Jeff Dunn yesterday and I asked her to call and have it put on the agenda for traffic commission, but she called here instead. And so I just think we want to put that on the agenda.
So so East Mansfield?
Yeah, it's it's the dotted lines that were put there to turn. She feels that they're not very safe and.
Okay, what did Jeff Dunn say?
I'll talk to you after.
Those dotted lines were put in at request at at traffic. Somebody had asked for those dotted lines.
Near at the underpasses?
Yeah, they were brought up and, yeah.
First, they they wanted those in there. They were put in there for safety because people were, yeah, feeling it wasn't. Okay, okay.
Okay, moving on, standing committee reports, plating?
I have nothing at this time, except if we're not having a committee meeting on Thursday, I just want to remind the public, we are having a public hearing on our next council meeting, which is on 8/18 at 6:00 PM. It is for the cargo container amendment to our.
Plating code.
Zoning code.
Thank you. Public lands and buildings?
I have no report at this time, but I did get a phone call from a guy who would like to talk to us about the Pines Reservoir in an upcoming meeting, so hopefully we'll have more information on that soon.
Will he be coming to committee or does he want to come to council street?
I'm not sure he's deciding what's going to be the best, so it's definitely not going to be the next week or so.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report at this time.
Economic development?
No report at this time.
Service?
No report at this time.
Traffic commission?
Nothing.
All right. Motion to accept what the plating and public lands and buildings announced?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion to accept and file the communications petitions?
Yes, you may.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers and a second by Ms. Sherrick to file to accept and file the correspondence that was received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Report to city officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a proclamation, I'm not sure it's in your packet, since April is is child abuse prevention and sexual assault awareness month and I won't read the whole thing, but I mean, it's obviously a very important topic. I'm happy to have a proclamation and declare this is for the city of Bucyrus. And also today it was, I'm not sure you all got the Mr. Young got the memo, obviously, wear teal for sexual assault awareness month. Very, very good, you did. And then this is the closest I have to teal right here. So it's so April 12th, we were supposed to wear blue for child abuse and prevention awareness and on the 26th, we wear denim for sexual assault awareness month. So there you go. You got all that information. Other than that, I don't have an official report. We want to wish everybody a very happy holy week and Easter. This is the highlight of the year for all Christians. I want to thank them for all that the churches and their leaders do in this community. It's it's the glue, I think, that holds this community together and has been for generations and actually centuries. They teach some of the greatest virtues, mercy, forgiveness and tolerance, as well as community involvement. And that is something that's been in decline and is sorely needed. So I want to wish everybody a happy Easter and that is all I have.
You have a motion to accept and file the proclamation.
Second.
I'm sorry, thank you. Carrie.
Carrie.
I have a motion by Mr. McPiver, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Safety service director report?
Yes, so here's Jeff's report. We want to refer the airport project to service and finance and also the annual road salt bid to finance. The board of control met this week, last week actually, and we awarded the mill and pave for 2023 to Bucyrus Road Materials. The 2023 material beds were bids were awarded yesterday. The next newsletter will be coming out, we're working on that right now with Bonnie. Our aggregation rate is excellent, both for electric and natural gas. So if somebody comes to your door or encourages you to drop the city's program, they are not doing that in your best interest. So if you if you aren't on the city's program, most likely you're going to be jacked up in June on the electric. So call us at our office and we'll get you locked in. The BP Duke Station is going to be rebuilt, going to be torn down and a larger building is going to be built. Building permits have already been issued and they're going to start here pretty soon. A zoning office has, this says five new home building, I thought it was seven or?
It has increased to seven, yes.
That's great news. Can you address that real briefly?
Sure.
Thank you.
So in the first quarter of the year, our office has issued seven building permits for new homes or we are in the process of issuing those seven permits. And that's something that's really unprecedented in the, you know, 15 years that I've been working as zoning administrator for the city of Bucyrus. So so that is a first. I can't recall a year that I've issued seven new home permits for the entire year. So so this is something that's that's really new for our community and a lot of people are moving to Bucyrus from outside of the community. We've gotten people from Michigan, had a young young gentleman come in today. He wanted a fence permit. He moved from Detroit. We've had people from Columbus, from down around Cincinnati moving to Bucyrus. So, you know, it's it's a great thing, so, yeah, let's keep up that work.
Thanks, John. Wait a minute, is one of those houses the one on Jump Street?
Yep.
That was moved into into place there?
Yep.
Did they put more of them in there then or?
Yeah, they I believe they have five available lots total and so, yeah, one of them is there. So that's good news.
Thank you. It's always good to have good news and thanks for elaborating on that. You know, to to talk a little bit more about that. I mean, you know, we've had tough times before. We're kind of in a little bit of a pickle now financially. I think there's some ways that that we can actually work to get out of it, but I'm not pessimistic about our future and it's reasons like that right there. So and we're also, we've got a really good economic development program going. We're we've been looked at quite a bit here and so something's going to pop. Okay, next one would be Omni Fiber and we got the prints for those for Omni Fiber today. They will be putting broadband in the city. They just registered and we're pretty excited about that. All Miller Park crews, we started putting up tennis and pickleball nets in the next couple of weeks and they will start working in the parks May 1st. Cleanup week is coming up. We have an annual cleanup week. It's the first week of May, May 1st through 5th. Residents will be allowed to put out six extra bags of garbage, of garbage, excuse me. And the compost site, just to let you know, is open every day now from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I'm not sure, is that Sunday also?
Yes.
Sunday too? Wow, okay, great. Bring your your natural materials out there and pile them up and we turn them in.[1718.83] at quite a bit here, and so something's going to pop. Okay, next one would be Omni Fiber, and we got the prints for those, for Omni Fiber today. They will be putting broadband in the city. They just registered, and we're pretty excited about that. All Miller Park crews, we started putting up tennis and pickleball nets in the next couple of weeks, and they will start working in the parks May 1st. Cleanup week is coming up, we have an annual cleanup week, it's the first week of May, May 1st through 5th, residents will be allowed to put out six extra bags of garbage, excuse me, and the compost site, just to let you know, is open every day now from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I'm not sure, is that Sunday also?
Yes.
Sunday too? Wow, okay, great. Bring your, your natural materials out there and pile them up, and we turn them in.
I believe they're grinding it up out, are they not? They've got the grinder out there.
Is it out there today? Okay, thank you.
So be careful when you go out there.
Yeah. And that's it, that's Jeff's report.
Thank you, sorry. We have two referrals, the airport project to service and finance and the road salt to finance.
So moved.
Collectively?
Yes, collectively.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I've got something, I wanted to add to the report there about the trash. You know, we do have the annual, which is great, we have the annual cleanup thing, but I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but you can throw some, an old couch or whatever, get a truckload of stuff and take it out to the dump, and you don't have to drive up the big hill and dump it in the thing. They have a place there where you can dump it right into basically a container, and I like to do that, you know, I gather up a bunch of stuff and take it out there, but that keeps it from sitting on your porch or sitting out behind your shed or whatever, you know, and it keeps the, keeps the, it can help keep the city clean and picked up a little bit, and you know, maybe you can get a neighbor or something, you know, you can go, I think it's 25 bucks for a truckload if it's trash, but if it's used building, I found this out, if it's used building materials, it's a little bit more, so, or if it's building materials, it's a little bit more, but if it's just trash, it's 25 bucks for a truckload, you know, get your neighbors cleaned up, and because they're not, you can't fit an old chair in a garbage bag, right? So anyhow, I just, a lot of, I really wasn't aware of it until a couple of years ago, so I just kind of wanted to let everybody know that, so, all right, moving on.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnett?
Thank you, Madam President. So the Bucyrus Community Improvement Corporation just was audited by the Ohio Auditor of State for years ending December 31st, 2021, and December 31st, 2020. Based upon that audit, the CIC will need to hold a meeting to adopt a record retention schedule as well as provide written documentation demonstrating that its public records policy was provided to the current record custodian. There's also one minor issue with the timeliness of filing financial reports with the auditor, which was due in large part when Rob Ratliff resigned and me taking over. I had, I was not aware that those reports needed to be filed and/or that I was filing those, but all of those reports have subsequently been filed and approved by the state auditor. Thank you. Under the new law, which most of you have heard about pertaining to the distracted driving portion, you know, your cell phone bill, texting and driving and all that good stuff, Ohio has now also updated penalties for certain speed offenses. Ohio Revised Code 4511.21P2 makes it a criminal offense for people driving through more than 40, 35 miles per hour in a business district of a municipal corporation, more than 50 miles per hour in other areas of a municipal corporation, or faster than 35 miles per hour in a school zone during recess, or while the children are going to or leaving school during school's opening or closing hours. So those are now misdemeanors of the fourth degree, which would carry up to 30 days in jail. I believe that this is something that then the traffic commission, as well as the health and safety committee, would want to take a look at, because our codified ordinance still has all of those as minor misdemeanors and only subject to a financial sanction, which, I mean, there are issues on both sides, so you may want to keep it as a minor misdemeanor, and then cite, the police would maybe cite them under a, under the city code to avoid the jailable sanction, because I know some law enforcement, as well as the court systems, are concerned about, if you make it a jailable sanction, then every one of those traffic tickets is now eligible for a jury trial and court-appointed counsel, and that could become costly. And I don't know that our judge and our jail would necessarily put traffic offenders in jail when we have significant other criminal issues, including but not limited to drug dealing, domestic violence, murder cases, all kinds of other things. Speeding tickets, if it's not egregious, but speeding tickets seem fairly low-key. And at the same time, there's reckless operation, so if you're driving 55 miles per hour through a school zone, reckless operation is a misdemeanor of the first degree, and courts are going to sanction you accordingly, so, I don't know, something to think about. I made a referral or asked for a referral, I don't make referrals, just in case anybody would like to discuss that. Along the same lines as Mr. Wireball, as well as the service safety directors, Gordon Grove, our property maintenance inspector, is back to work after his usual winter layoff, which came, he became back March 1st of 2023. After a long winter and significant high winds in the recent past, it's time to get outside and clean up trash, debris, and rubbish. Also, the grass is growing, so please keep your properties in compliance with our codes. If you would like to file property maintenance complaint, please contact Mr. Grove at 409-562-6767, extension 235, or stop by the law director's office, and he or Alyssa can help you with that. Along the same lines, I've had several inquiries pertaining to 216 West Mary Street. This gentleman has had a significant history of violations for a period of time exceeding my time as the interim law director. A formal criminal complaint has been filed with Crawford County Municipal Court pertaining to these violations, and I would just say that the criminal property maintenance process is time-consuming and frustrating. First, we issue a 10-day notice for whatever the issue may be, trash, grass, weeds, or rubbish. If the individual fails to comply, then a criminal complaint is issued, which takes time to serve, and then set for an arraignment, which usually then elongates the process another 14 days. Thus, the original 10-day notice has now become 24-ish days before I can see somebody in court, and that's if everything works quickly. At the arraignment, the individual may plead, or probably will plead, not guilty, which then gives them another 30 days before they will come back for a pre-trial, thus the 10-day notice is now approaching 60 days. We could theoretically take these matters to trial, obtain a conviction, but based upon the reality of the circumstances, courts probably will not issue a jail sanction, and fines are not necessarily the court's main approach, because depending on the individual, some of these fines will not be collected, and sometimes we're dealing with individuals that are tight on money anyways. Thus, it's been my experience to achieve the best results. We use the threat of additional litigation and prosecution to effectuate change. This has been successful on many occasions, but it can be a lengthy process, and some of the most notorious violators seemingly are unaffected by this process. In the coming months, I intend to bring Mr. Grove to council, probably a committee meeting to discuss, further discuss, which we've discussed previously, streamlining our process to cut down on delays, and I know he always talks to me about the vacant building registry. Finally, and I didn't put this in my report, but the lady that submitted the issue about the pool closing indicated that the only other option for fun in this town are alcohol and drugs, and I would remind our entire community that alcohol and drugs can, alcohol can be fun, whatever, but drugs are obviously not fun, come with lifelong issues, and our community has a vibrant library, multiple camps, reservoirs, church festivals, Bible schools, we have videos at Shine's Art Park, multiple playgrounds, disc golf, the Crawford County Parks District with Unger Park, Lowell Park, Camp Michael, we have a golf course, we have the Conservation League, bowling alleys, we have the All Miller Park, we have music at the Murals, First Fridays, the Bratwurst Festival, it's near and dear to Mr. Myers' heart, Cruising with the Cops, we had the motorcycle thing, which I don't remember what it's called, but there was a bunch of motorcycles.
5O Bike Rally.
5O Bike Rally, the Crawford County Fair, and our youth can participate in such activities as baseball, softball, soccer, Boy Scouts, 4H, and all kinds of other things, so although I do support, what?
Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts, sorry.
Thriving Arts Council.
We have a thriving arts council. Anything else?
Bucyrus Little Theater.
Bucyrus Little Theater.
And auditions for the next play, which is Beauty and the Beast, for the summer for the kids, is April 23rd and 24th.
I'm a shoe-in for the beast, yeah.
You're over 18, sorry.
Yeah, that's true.
And we have a splash pad coming.
I've heard rumor of a splash pad, but there are a lot of good things to do in our community, and a lot of small businesses work hard on First Fridays and music at the murals, you know, I think that there are good things and a lot of opportunities for our children as well. I would love for the pool to open, but there are other things other than alcohol and drugs to do in the Bucyrus community. That's all I got, and that was not in my report, so I will write that up for you.
He'd like a copy of the tape.
I am in deep trouble on that one.
I would like to just commend Mr. Gurnett for putting that list together and calling out a lot of the other things, you know, there's a lot of people upset about the pool, I get it.
Absolutely.
Come on. There's plenty of other things that we're going to be able to do in the interim until we get back to normal next year, so thank you for that.
All right, he has a referral for the Ohio Revised Code 4511-21 for the revisions in the codified ordinance going to health and safety. I know we can't do traffic commission, but it's on your guys' radar, but I have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Lewis?
My original report stated that there were no reports available due to this meeting being so close to month-end balancing, but due to Susan's awesomeness, she was able to squeeze the completed reports into council's packets today. I received a document from the mayor in which he references a statement of cash position showing a reduction of $709,000 from this time last year, which is a total reduction of 68%. Those numbers are correct. I would like to draw attention to the gross income tax revenue comparisons and the 16% revenue loss when comparing March 2023 to March 2022. Over the last seven years, March tends to be one of our strongest performing months. Next, if you turn your attention to gross income tax revenues year-to-date total comparisons table, this table adds total revenues from January, February, and March, you will see that overall we have a total revenue loss of 3% from this time last year. Also, with the exception of 2019, once we hit revenue loss in a year, we tend not to get back into positive revenue gains by year-end, so it's not boding well for the If I want to kind of veer into the question that was asked earlier, we, for the general fund, our budgeted amount of money for this year is $6,58,398.45, and the amount of revenue we brought in for 2022 for the general fund was $6,842,575.70. So even though we brought in more revenue than was, what was budgeted, the issue we run into is expenditures that might, we have to go outside of the budgeted amount of money for, so for instance, later this year, we'll probably have to appropriate funds from outside of the budgeted money to pay for our fire department salary for the rest of the year. So that brings that, you know, little extra $800,000 down even further, and every year, if this trajectory continues where we're paying more for employees, which will tend to happen, then it's going to keep eating into that amount that we use to live off of next year while income tax revenues are coming in. So if that explains the issue with opening the pool and why we need to save all the money we can, because unless this Safety Forces levy passes, or we discuss the income tax reduction credit again, you know, we'll probably survive a year, maybe two, but after that, it's going to look really bleak. So, back to good things. I did receive a kind card of encouragement from Joyce Dorsey, and I just want to say thank you to her. And again, to the public, I would once again ask that you take advantage of income taxes extended hours, the full schedule is posted on Facebook. I did want to let you know that the office will be open this Good Friday, April 7th, 8:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., as well as the Saturday, April 8th, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That is it.
Do I have a motion to accept and file the auditor's reports?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have nothing, excuse me, from the treasurer, nor the police chief, there's in your packet the report summary from the fire department, and also the fire and EMS report. May I have a motion to accept and file those collectively?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept all reports as presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. granting permission for visitors to speak regarding the standing and special committee and city officer reports.
Kurt Fankhauser, I just want to commend the auditor for giving the clarity she just gave on that report. I had never heard a auditor's report that was able to explain the city's finances like she just did. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Vicki Deshawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. At the March 21st, '23 council meeting, council passed emergency legislation, appointing two individuals to serve on the three-member local board of tax review. The third member is to be appointed by the mayor, and I just wanted to ask Mayor Reeser if he has appointed that third person.
I was sick that night, and was I to get reintroduced to council?
No.
Just appoint your person.
Okay. I have a letter, I haven't yet.
You have not yet? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the heads up.
Mike Castor, 130 Brentwood Street. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm back again, wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I was listening to a few things this evening, and I thought maybe I better say something as reminders. For Mr. Long, I appreciate what you brought forward tonight. I really can't go back too much, but if you'd been at some of the other meetings, you would have seen what this council did trying to see what they could do with the pool.
Oh, no, we're on the same team.
Yeah, I know, but they virtually, the well's dry, and there's nowhere else to get money right now. Which brings us to basically the levy, as we said three to four weeks ago, it's right around the corner. We're now at less than a month. I'm hoping things are moving forward to help get information out to the public. We need this to pass, everybody, all the citizens. Mr. Gurnett covered that new cell phone situation well. The only thing I would bring out about that, they write up wonderful laws, some, if you're a law enforcement officer, you sit back and try to figure, okay, which way's up. The only thing I would ask a city to do, if you're going to take a look at this, Brian, is take a look at it in a general, common sense, logical way for the police officers to find something to work with. I know a lot of cities or suburbs of the state, they've taken it completely the other way, you don't use a cell phone if you're in a car inside their city limits. Really hate to see it go there, but the way this has headed, that may be your best answer out of this, especially when you're talking about, if you're going to put jail sentences on it. I know the state has a progressive conviction on it, your second, third offense or something.
Right, the jail sentence was for speeding.
Okay.
Not the cell phone.
Okay.
And I would tell you.
I was going to say, that was the first I'd heard about.
Very, yes, that's just for the new speed zones. It's very well-written, so much so that there are more exceptions to the rule, so that you can hold your cell phone with your foot while driving with your left foot, and you're legal, but, you know, I mean, if you actually read that, it's, but the basic point of that law is you're not allowed to text and you're not allowed to dial, you have to use your voice command, but you can still hold your phone up to your ear, exception F or G or H.
Yeah.
It don't drive with your left foot on the wheel, it was a joke. Public safety announcement.
And you're, but you're right, that's the way a lot of the stuff gets written.
There's so many exceptions. There's so many exceptions to that rule that it's, it's been vastly overstated to what it actually means.
But for the committees it was being forwarded to and for the Traffic Commission, please take your time and include the law enforcement into this.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So, um, cellphone usage you covered. We talked to Mr. Long. Talked about taxes. I know I'm short to three minutes. One thing was not talked about tonight, so I'm going to end with throwing a wet blanket on the budget situation. I hope some of you heard the news about OPEC. It seems, should be pretty wild. But it's all those follow-up little news pieces that people miss sometimes. Where are I being told our gas prices are probably going to go up? You're hearing all sorts of different figures depending who's given the figures. And it depends who wants the information out there. I'm going to speak again. Dan, remember last year, you and I talked about fuel prices and stuff and where you guys were at the budget. I'm going to remind you, we went through the 2008, 2009. The city has got to take a good, close look, this OPEC cutback. You've still got your cruisers running. You've got your fire trucks. Couple of news pieces I heard, and I don't think they're too far wrong. They think probably within the next few days, we're going to see, we've already seen our gas prices here in the last few days jump, what, 40, 45 cents. Nationwide, they think we're going to see 10, 15, maybe 20 cent hike across the board. A lot of that is based on the last OPEC cut. That's what we're seeing now. They're now going to cut another million barrels a day. Another article I was listening to, they're anticipating our current gas price on average is about $3 a gallon across the country. They figure before this is done stuff, the national average is going to go to four. The only thing I'm suggesting, and I'm going to end with that, please take the time, Dan, and for your safety services and for the mayor. Calculate, you've got eight months left to go in the year. You guys are going to have to re-figure whatever you did last year for the budget, for your fuel, for everything, garbage trucks, fire trucks. If you burn stuff or run cars, you've got to have fuel. Re-figure your budgets. Take worst-case scenario and put that into your budget until you know that you're going to come back out of it right away. Otherwise, as I told Dan last year, you don't want to be on that course where you get to the end of the wall and you're staring a brick wall in your face and you're out of money. Please take a look at that budget, and I'll leave you with that. Not good news, but unfortunately, our government, please don't sweat it. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Consideration for proposed legislation for the first time?
Ordinance number 17-2023 amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by decreasing the current balance in the capital outlay item, line item by $6,500 within the solid waste management category within the solid waste replacement subpar paragraph with the solid waste replacement fund and increasing the current balance in the materials and supplies line item by $6,6,500 within the solid waste category within the solid waste management subpar paragraph within the solid waste management fund and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 214-2023 authorizing and directing the service safety director on behalf of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio to ban vehicle tra, ban vehi-
Vehicular.
Traffic, including bicycles, except authorized emergency personnel on Saturday, June 10th, 2023 from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., midnight, on East Warren Street for the food court from 12:00 p.m., noon, to 12:00 a.m., midnight, along Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue, as well as the 100 blocks of Mansfield Street and Washington Square. The 100 block of East and West Rensselaer Street, the 100 block of West Warren Street, and the 100 blocks of East and West Charles Street, respectively, allowing access by local traffic and safety service personnel to the alleys located between Walnut Street and Sandusky Avenue, as well as the alleys between the, between Poplar Street and Sandusky Avenue. In order that said streets may be utilized temporarily as a Cruisin' with the Cops custom and classic car show parade route for an expected 600 custom and classic automobiles, more or less, and to provide as well sufficient parking facilities for the public display of said automobiles. Said special event, to be sponsored by the Fraternal Order of Police, Bucyrus Lodge 68, must provide for all, for and direct all signs needed to reroute state highways according to the directions of the service safety director and chief of police. The service safety director and the chief of police are hereby authorized to make the necessary arrangements for the rerouting of affected traffic on both federal and state highways passing through subject areas to facilitate the orderly movement of traffic during a for said time period through the City of Bucyrus, Ohio.
All right. May I have a motion to accept this as a first reading?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for the general public to have comment on the reading of the first.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. Resolution 214, 2023, Cruisin' with the Cops. At the March 23rd Health and Safety Committee meeting, committee member Young questioned, and I quote, "if Dora was not available during the Cruisin' with Cops car show." Committee Chair Myers stated, because of the size of the crowd, he thought it was okay. Intram Law Director Gurnard stated that, quote, "We could put in the legislation that it would continue in full force and effect, just for clarity. I haven't looked at it, but I think Dora's year-round, and then if you specifically want to exclude something, we could do legislation to exclude that right and issue notice." I've reviewed this resolution, and I find no reference to Dora, whether it's excluded or not. At the April 7th, '22 Economic Development Committee meeting, citizen Lisa Allsepp questioned if Dora would be shut down during the Bratwurst Festival. Jesse Ferner, former Chamber of Commerce director, stated, and I quote, "There is a part in this application where the city can request it to be shut down for any event for certain reasons. I've reviewed the application, and I find no such reference. The city can request Dora to be shut down for any event for certain reasons." And I just wondered if the Intram Law Director has reviewed the application?
No, I had forgotten about that issue, but, uh, I mean, so I can go put that into this piece of legislation if that's what the council so desires.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Being that this is the first reading and it's not an emergency, is that something that would have to be done tonight?
So, if we amended it, which is fine, then it would go back to the first reading again.
Right. And that has to cross us all over again.
Right.
So, what do you want to do? What do you guys want to do? Do you want it in the wording to allow or disallow?
If I understand correctly, if you say nothing, it continues to allow.
So, I guess my other point, that, that, um, people don't read our legislation and the whereas, but I assume that you may get more bang for your buck by, um, advertising that the Dora would continue during the cruising for the cops with the local media, Facebook or whatever, by the Facebook page of the city. I don't know that people read whereas, but I'm happy to do it either way.
Do we need to send it back to committee and have the committee request that, I view procedurally?
Uh, I think probably...
If we did, would that have to be done as an emergency?
Well, it was already requested by the committee.
Well, that was my question, and I don't know if Mr. DeShawn listened to the, uh, audio, but, um, the request for legislation included that language that it, that Dora shall continue during the cruising for the cops, or it was not in that request for legislation?
It was not in the request for legislation.
It was just discussed.
Susan did ask, are you wanting that in here, meaning the clarity that there would be Dora going on, and the answer was yes.
Right. So, my point would then be the legislation that has been read would be, um, not in line with what you guys had originally requested. So, um, I would write, I mean, we could write this in saying this, and it is, well, it doesn't have to be an amendment, I guess is my point, because that's what you guys originally requested. So, the title and the body is substantially correct, but for the amended version, or I wouldn't even give amended, but the corrected version is going to say that the Dora boundaries shall continue during the cruising for the cops to comply with the original request for legislation.
So, we can pass that as corrected?
Your second reading is going to have the corrected language, which you originally.
Well, no, I meant, I meant the first reading. I didn't know if we were going to do it, or, so as a second reading, we can do it as a second reading as corrected?
Yes, because that would be the, what you actually entail.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mr. Gurnard, um, add that corrected piece in to bring it back in line with what was originally requested.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, consideration of proposed legislation for the final time?
Resolution number 208-2023, giving consent of the City of Bucyrus for the Ohio Department of Transportation to remove snow and ice and use snow and ice control material on state highways inside the city corporate limits and authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for snow and ice removal and giving consent to the City of Bucyrus for the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform certain maintenance and/or repair on state highways inside the city corporation and authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for certain maintenance and/or repair.
Do I have a motion to accept this as a final reading?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public participation on legislation read for the final time? Seeing none, referring back to originating committee-proposed ordinance 17-2023, refer back to finance. Proposed resolution 208-2023, refer back to finance. Proposed resolution 214-2023, refer back to finance. Committee report, I'm sorry, that was 214, 2023, is referred back to health and safety. I apologize. Committee report on pending legislation, finance?
Finance is favorable. To propose ordinance 17-2023, uh, the city dumpster repair. What's that? Was that an emergency?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I guess I missed that. And then, uh, finance is favorable to proposed resolution 208-2023, the O dots, ice and snow.
Health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution 214, 2023 as corrected.
Further consideration of legislation. Ordinance number 17-2023. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 17-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings in the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Sherrick?
Aye.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 17-2023?
Yes, I mean, so moved.
So moved.
Who was the second?
Dear.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Young.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Keever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Spiegel?
Yes.
Ordinance 17-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 208-2023, first reading?
It's final reading.
It's final.
Oh, it says first reading right there. So, do I have a motion to adopt resolution 208-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Resolution 208-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution dash 214-2023?
Uh, point of order, that was just the first reading.
It's not a hard decision.
Right. May I have a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by, I'm sorry. Yes, I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young. Roll call, please.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
We're in executive session at 8:26. We are back live. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms.
Sherrick.
Sherrick?
Again, a.
By Mr. Myers. Second by Mr. Myers.
Sherrick?
Yes. Aye.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
We are out of executive session at 8:30 or 4:00 p.m. Do we have any old or unfinished business?
Man, I might go, uh, piggyback on what the auditor said more briefly, if I could.
Yeah.
I, uh, nobody likes to talk about budget issues. I know, and I thank Kaylee for the great job she did there. Um, but, you know, we dropped $112,000 last month compared to last year, and as Kaylee said, you know, when you're dropping in one of your two biggest months of the year, 16 percent, it's significant. But it really shouldn't come as a surprise, you know, because I, for a year, have been telling that we're going to be having some issue. We need to have more money this year, and we've done nothing on it. And, uh, you know, and, and, and with recent legislation about minimum staffing, um, our, our hands, we, we basically have one tool to cut expenses that we haven't already done, and that's layoffs. And, and then the layoffs would have to come from the police and the dispatch, so, you know, so I don't think the, the general public of, uh, Bucyrus wants that to happen, so, uh, I'm, I'm asking you guys to, you know, see if we can work together with, uh, police department, fire department, to kind of see if there's ways we can, you know, cut some of the overtime expenses that we've, we're, we're going to be over $600,000 this year, which is 10 percent of the Safety Forces budget. It's, it's really a brutal expense to us. So, I know we're in a situation I would rather not be in. I think there's, I would like to see if we could, you know, refer this again and maybe have some further discussions, see if something can be done, some compromise somewhere. And I think another issue that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later is the, uh, the income tax credit again. Um, if we would have had that this year, we wouldn't be in this financial mess. And so, and it's, something needs to be, especially with this levy. The levy is, a lot of the people I've talked to are brought up to me that this levy doesn't address any of that. You're asking the people that are paying 100 percent of the taxes here, which are you folks, us folks, to continue to pay even more. And, and I, I, it's just, it's, it's not going to be a scenario that's going to be. And, and I, it's just, it's, it's not going to be a scenario that's going to be sustainable. So I'd like to, you know, I don't want to have an adversarial relationship about that. I mean, I think we owe it to the citizens of this community to work together, because that's, that's what they elected us to do. And our financial predicament has gotten worse, not better. So I'm asking you to look at this again and possibly refer it. Maybe we get the chiefs in here in a couple of weeks at a committee meeting and see, and then talk to them in the, in the meantime, if we can come up with some way to discuss these issues and see if there's something that can be done.
Finance?
Yes, finance, yeah.
I'll make a motion to refer that to finance, and I appreciate the mayor speaking on that and saying that, you know, it'd be nice that we could all come to the table and then talk together.
And I'll second that, just because it's talking about working together.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any newer miscellaneous business?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
The fire chief has asked me to refer the billlet and manpower for the purpose of the safer grant.
To?
That would go to finance, I believe.
Finance, yeah.
I'll second that, if that was a motion.
Yeah, probably let's do finance and health and safety.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Just an announcement, there will not be any committee meetings on Thursday, the 6th, due to Holy Thursday services. Most everybody's going to be gone. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Potter?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have the airport project referred to service and finance. The road salt referred to finance. The Ohio revised code 4511.21 revisions of the Bucyrus codified ordinance referred to health and safety. I have the budget and income tax referred to finance. And the manpower billlet for the fire department referred to finance and health and safety. Is there any other referrals that we missed or need to do? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick. We are adjourned at?
8:38.
8:39.[1782.11]